Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of March 31st, 2025. Please be advised, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the chambers by the northwest door. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation, and please remain standing if you are able.
(inaudible) The Order of Business of the City Council is as follows.
The clerk will call items on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such person, and their address, unless the address requirement is waived to perfect, to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item shall come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under the third reading. On the second and last Monday of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for the, for the date, nor plan for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for stability and allow for the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Thank you.
Our first time of business today for city council agenda for Monday, March 31st, 2025 is our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and Sections 3.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on anything on the consent agenda? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please move forward.
I'll call item 1A, reappointing Stacy Blyker, Catherine Garcia, and Tom Randa to the Lincoln Lancaster County Board of Health for terms to expire April 15th of 2028, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second? Second by Bekias. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, go ahead and call the roll.
Bekias?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Items 2A through 2D were introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second? Second by Bekias. Any discussion? Go ahead and call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Bekias?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right. Moving forward on 4A, right?
Correct. Public hearing legal resolutions, item 4A, manager application of Brian J. Stanley for Aldi Inc., doing business as Aldi 27, located at 8701 South 28th Street.
All right, is the applicant present? Go ahead and come forward.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. My name's Ava Tracy.
Great, great. Can you tell us a little bit about your application?
Yeah, so I'm here on behalf of Brian. He's the store manager for Aldi 27, 8701 South 28th Street. Have two Lincoln Aldi locations and proud to serve the Lincoln communities, so we're excited to continue selling alcohol and supporting all of our customers here in Lincoln.
Great. Counselors, any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this application?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one coming forward, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this item.
Second? Second by Bekias. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bekias?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Okay, we'll move on to Section 5, our public hearing resolutions. I'll call item 5A, approving voluntary school and childcare lead test and reduction grant program agreement between the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and Nebraska Department in Environment and Energy for the lead reme, excuse me, remediation project.
All right, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Brock Hannish. I'm the Division Manager of Environmental Public Health at the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, 3131 Oak Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. So in 2027, coming up soon, the monitoring of lead in schools and licensed childcare facilities will become mandatory under EPA's Lead and Copper Rule improvements. So in preparation for this, NDEE's Lead and, Lead and Testing Reduction Grant Program, which is funded by EPA's Water Infrastructure Improvements for the Nation Act, abbreviated WIN, we've seen this, you know, up here before, they provide schools and childcare as an opportunity to receive federal assistance for their efforts now to address some of these fixtures that might be emitting large quantities of lead or above action levels in these particular locations. So if we can address it now, we can save using or utilizing local funding in the future to address these locations where there might be elevated levels of lead. So the resolution before you is to approve a grant agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the Department, the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy for up to $160,000, taking effect until 2026 in June. Grant funds will be used to build upon the testing or remediation of lead fixtures in schools and licensed childcare programs within Lancaster County, which LHD has been conducting for the past three years through WIN grants that we've been receiving through NDEE. LPS has been sampling and addressing their own infrastructure in parallel with us throughout the, the number of years that we've been conducting these and then taking remedial action. To date, all licensed childcare centers and schools within Lincoln Lancaster County purview have been tested for lead with action levels of 10 parts per billion, so any of that we've tested, we've tested all of them. Any of that were above 10 parts per billion, we notified them and we've been working with them to replace those fixtures to ensure that they're no longer emitting or piecing out lead, so that children are not consuming this water with lead in it. We're now targeting fixtures where samples were collected with a threshold of eight or an action level of 8 ppb, so between 8 and higher, we'll reach back out to them and see if, you know, they're willing and able to replace those. And then once we find a location, whether it be a childcare facility or a school outside of LPS, that has 8 ppb or higher, once we get in there and we notice that there's 8 ppb, we can also then test the rest of the fixtures within the school regardless of, you know, the, the ppb, the amount of lead that's there, and actually go through remedial action. So if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this particular issue? Seeing none, go ahead and move forward.
I'll call item 5B, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city from March 1st through March 15th of 2025.
All right, is there anyone here to discuss any pending claims against the city? Counselors, any questions? Okay, well, go ahead and move forward.
I'll call item 5C, a resolution expressing the city's gratitude and honoring Don Wesley for his outstanding service to the state of Nebraska and the city of Lincoln.
Councilman Weber.
Uh, thank you, Chair Carlson. I'll save my remarks for the voting session, but I just wanted to read the resolution into the record, so that way folks knew exactly what we're hearing testimony on right, right now. And it is a resolution to honor the life, legacy, and public service of Don Wesley to the city of Lincoln and to the state of Nebraska. Whereas Don Wesley was first elected to the Nebraska Legislature in 1978 at the age of 24, becoming the third youngest person to ever serve in the unicameral legislature. And whereas Don Wesley diligently represented the 26th Legislative District of Northeast Lincoln for 20 years, during which more than 300 legislative initiatives he sponsored or co-sponsored were successfully enacted into state law. Whereas Don Wesley served for 14 years as chairman of Health and Human Services Committee, advocating for policies that improved healthcare access for Nebraskans. And whereas Don Wesley was elected as the city of Lincoln's 49th mayor in May of 1999, bringing his leadership and vision to city government. And whereas, as mayor, Don Wesley prioritized strengthening the city's established neighborhoods and downtown, guiding Lincoln through a period of significant business and residential growth while implementing a long-range plan to ensure the city's continued prosperity. And whereas Mayor Wesley played a pivotal role in advancing the largest infrastructure project in the city's history, the Antelope Valley Project, which improved flood control, enhanced traffic infrastructure, and revitalized core neighborhoods. And whereas Mayor Wesley was instrumental in forging a historic public-private partnership resulting in the development and opening of Haymarket Park, a premier sports venue that continues to benefit the community. And whereas throughout his decades of service, Don Wesley remained a dedicated and principled leader committed to the well-being of Lincoln and Nebraska, leaving an enduring impact on the city's progress and the lives of its residents. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Lincoln, Nebraska, that they hereby express their deepest gratitude and highest commendation in honor of Don Wesley's extraordinary legacy of public service, leadership, and unwavering dedication to the people of Lincoln and the state of Nebraska. And it is my honor to introduce this resolution.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Any public comment on item 5C? Seeing none, we can move forward, Clerk. Oh, go ahead.
I would like to say, Don Wesley was a friend of mine as well. He actually supported my campaign, and, you know, we had lunch together after I was elected, and he was a very good mayor, easy to talk to about any kind of an issue, that sort of thing. I'll tell, I'll share one short story. One Sunday morning, someone got on the, the Lincoln Police Department's police radio and said, "Unit 1, I need a backup at Berry's Bar, 9th and Q Street." Most of the officers, we all looked at each other and kind of went, "Who in the heck is Unit 1?" Well, Don Wesley had a car, and the mayor's car had a police radio in it, and it also had some red lights in the grill. He made a traffic stop on somebody that the Lincoln Police Department was looking for on an early Sunday morning, and we went over there, scooped the guy up, and kind of chewed Don out, said, "Don't be doing any more traffic stops." But he was a heck of a nice man, and, and I'll miss him as well, so, thank you very much, Councilman Weber, for the, the resolution. Appreciate it, big.
Counselors, anyone else?
I'll, I'll speak while we're just in discussion, and then we can vote on it in the, the voting session. So, you know, obviously, the, the news of Mayor Wesley's passing, I think, shocked all of us. He was someone that was just a constant source of encouragement and support, and I really reflected on the, the legacy of his public service and how that impacted me as, as a young person. I can say definitively, I, I don't think I'd be in this seat today had it not been for Mayor Wesley, not only because of his encouragement, but because of the path that he paved for so many other young folks like James and myself, running for office, being able to be taken seriously incredibly because he showed exactly what it's like to be a young person advocating when he was back elected in 1978, a tremendous lawmaker. And I think that Mayor Wesley truly represented exactly what a public servant should be. He didn't do it because he wanted the title. He served in public office because he was passionate about public policy. That's why he stayed involved for years after his elected service. He was a visionary, whether you look at Antelope Valley, whether you look at Haymarket, or even look at his some days list, as Mayor Gaylor Barrett has touched on. And he was a people's person, right? He was an encourager, encouraged his constituents, encouraged other folks that were interested about their community, about public policy. He was a phenomenal listener, which I think is needed now more than ever in the space of public service. He was a great thinker, right? You could bring issues up to him, and he'd really chew on it, digest it, and get back to you, and, and give great advice. He was, he was a phenomenal advisor as well. But I think more than anything, and, and we heard this at, at his memorial service, he was a people's person, and that's important. He valued relationships, not because, you know, it was good business. He valued relationships because that's who Mayor Wesley was, and it reflected in his birthday cards, his notes, his text messages to folks. And he'll be greatly missed in our community, but we are forever going to remember the impacts that he has left behind. And just real briefly, Councilwoman Sondra Washington is attending a family matter, and she asked me to read into the record that much can be said about the work and legacy of Mayor Wesley, so her comments may be redundant, but that Mayor Wesley saw potential in everyone, and that the possibility to create positive outcomes on many issues. He was in love with Lincoln, and as a state senator, as our mayor, and as a civically engaged resident up till the day he passed, he was a mentor to many and a lifelong champion for our community. Thank you, Don.
James?
I just want to add a little bit to what Brody just so eloquently talked about, and what Tom brought up also, and that's, Don represented Northeast Lincoln in the legislature, and I have the privilege of representing the same part of our city on the city council. And he graduated from Northeast High School, and the same high school I graduated from, and like our school model says, model, like our school motto says, "Once a rocket, always a rocket." Coming from the same part of the city, Don's example means a lot. It shows young people in Northeast Lincoln, and especially students walking the same halls at Northeast High School, that leadership, service, and impact are within reach. He was a role model, not just because of what he accomplished, but because of where he came from and how he carried himself along the way. And I want to just point out some of the accomplishments that he had in the legislature. He expanded early childhood services, strengthened child welfare policies, pushed for better protections for mental health patients, pushed for better access to healthcare for low-income and rural Nebraskans, and expanding home and community-based services to allow people to stay in their homes rather than institutions. I often think about the people who came before me in public service, and those who led with compassion, clarity, and connection, and Don was one of those people. He was convener. He knew that bringing people together across differences, across party lines, and across perspectives was essential to getting things done. Like Brody mentioned earlier, he was a supporter, whether it's young leaders starting out, longtime colleagues, or someone just trying to make a difference in the neighborhood. Don showed up and made people feel seen. And I constantly think about a phone call that I had with him after I had first gotten elected that really shapes how I view public service today. And more than anything, Don was relationship-oriented. He understood that good policy starts with good relationships, and with listening first, caring deeply, and building trust over time. I'm grateful for his example, for his leadership, and the impact he made not just on Northeast Lincoln, not just our city, but for the state as a whole. Thank you, Councilman Weber, for bringing forward this, this resolution, and thank you, Don, for the legacy you leave behind.
Anyone else? Well, I'll just add, I, I first met Don in the early 90s. I was a senior in high school. The Lincoln High Student Council did an exchange with the Lincoln Northeast Student Council, and they brought in a guest speaker, a senator at the time, Don Wesley. He talked a lot about being involved, staying involved, and getting active, even as a young person, how important that was, and that stays with me even to this day. So, Don, we'll miss you. Madam Clerk, go ahead and proceed.
I'll call item 5A, approving voluntary school and childcare lead test and reduction grant program agreement between the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy for the lead remediation project, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second? Second by Bekias? Go ahead and call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bekias?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5B is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city from March 1st through March 15th of 2025, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second? Second by Bekias? Go ahead and call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bekias?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5C is a resolution, excuse me, expressing the city's gratitude and honoring Don Wesley for his outstanding service to the state of Nebraska and the city of Lincoln, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Bowers? Go ahead and call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Bekias?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right, moving along to 6A.
I'll call item 6A, 6B, and 6C together. Item 6A through 6C is annexation 25002, application of Fire Ridge LLC to annex approximately 2.82 acres, a property generally located at South 98th Street and Van Dorn Streets, and the related street and alley vacation 25001, application of Fire Ridge LLC to vacate a portion of Tupelo Lane Right of Way, generally located northeast of South 102nd Street and Van Dorn Street, and the related change of zone 25005, application of Fire Ridge LLC to change the zoning designation from AG Agriculture to R3 Residential, and property generally located at South 98th and Van Dorn Streets.
Mr. Allen, welcome.
Good afternoon, Rick Onan with E&amp;A Consulting, 2077 N Street. This is a pretty straightforward, simple application. We are requesting annexation and change of zone on some property to a couple, couple reasons. One, we're making a slight revision to the original final plat for this subdivision, and we are anticipating or preparing for a future subdivision, or feature addition. The area that's being annexed is in red there on the sheet, a small area. There's a small finger that extends up along the back of some platted lots as the developer opted to go to a different product that didn't quite fit on the lots as they were originally platted. So we have a final plat in process to change the depth of those lots. Change of zone is the same boundary. And then the impetus for all this is essentially a, the next addition to the subdivision is generally what I've got outlined in yellow. We anticipate that coming before the planning department, either late this summer or early next year. And so those annexations, change of zones would accommodate that subdivision. The, the street vacation, there's a slight realignment of Tupelo Lane to accommodate a, a new lot configuration, and that area to be vacated is just a small sliver to accommodate that realignment of the street. I would entertain any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, appreciate it. Sorry, any public testimony on this item, these items? Madam Clerk, go ahead and move us forward.
Section 7 is ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Item 7A is admitting Title 10 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to create new definitions and, excuse me, new definitions and prohibitions for racetrack and racing. In a new chapter, 10.43 entitled nuisance vehicles, to provide that a motor vehicle in violation of the listed ordinances of the city will be declared a disorderly vehicle and a public nuisance, and to provide that a motor vehicle in violation of the listed city ordinances in Nebraska statutes that is declared a disorderly vehicle and a public nuisance may be subject to impoundment, introduced by Bekias.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Shob?
Chair Carlson.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bekias.
Uh, thank you, Chair Carlson, I appreciate it. Just wanted to, before we get into the voting session, offer some thank yous to folks who have worked on this, this ordinance, starting with the Lincoln Police Department Chief Morrow and Captain Hupka specifically, the mayor's office, individuals who wrote in, neighborhood associations who wrote in, businesses, and a few car enthusiasts that I was able to meet with last week as well. You know, I think these new tools and policies that remove dangerous drivers from our roads will help keep us all safer. I will support this motion, but I would also, due to some of the conversations that I think we have had here as council members as well, and other folks out in the community, I would just like to informally request, and I see Chief Morrow here, just informally request that council and LPD follow up, let's say, in a year with data, and just see how this code change is impacting Lincoln and evaluate it going forward, too. Just with some data after the first year, just to see where we are. I don't anticipate any radical changes or anything, but would just like to, to offer that up, because I know that there are some people that would like to follow up on this and, and have a look, and I think maybe after a year with some data, that might be a good idea. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Shob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Bekias, for what you offered and entered into the record. I too support this, but I do have a couple of small concerns. What we're doing today is voting on something that the community has asked for on multiple occasions, and we have a responsibility to try to keep our community at wide, safer. I think this will move us in that directions. I do have some concerns about the discretion aspect of this ordinance change. Councilman Bekias's request that we follow up with data is good. I believe that Lincoln Police Department will use discretion in a manner that protects our community and respects the rights of everyone who lives here. And I will also, working with him and the Police Department and others, be watching the data and watching how this progresses. I think of this as more of a, a teaching and learning exercise, that we can explain to the public that some of the behaviors our drivers use in this community are not what we want to see, and that this will be an opportunity to speak with them and educate them, and hopefully bring everyone to a place where we can all enjoy the road safely. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilman Duden first.
I'll just bring up a little data for, for everybody here, because I did some research and, or had my cohort intern do some research on this, and just the negligent driving violations alone on Oak Street between 27th and 84th over the last three and a half years, only three months of this year, you've got 471 violations. And altogether, the serious violations totaled up to about 615 over the last three and a half, three years and three months of data as to what I looked at. And I looked at willful reckless, speed contests, reckless driving, racing on highway speeds, reckless and negligent operation, willful reckless driving, second offense. And there's been a total of over three years and three months. And there's been a total of over three years and three months, 1,152 accidents alone just on O Street between 27th and 84th. And that's just way too many, way too many. When we talk about looking at data, I hope we actually look at the speed limit maybe on 27th to 84th, because that might be a factor that would also influence the noise, probably more so than enforcement, and actually that would aid enforcement at the same time. Yeah, I would agree. We had a lot of citizen input about how noisy it is, how dangerous it is, and so I think any enforcement tools that we add is a plus, and I would encourage the chief and the Lincoln Police Department to step it up as well, because it looks like we've got some real serious problems there, and one way to hopefully to curb that a little bit. Hopefully, people will be able to sleep a little better, their dogs won't be so irritated and what have you, so it'll help everybody in the entire community, especially along that O Street corridor, so.
And Councilman Weber?
Already, thank you, Chair Carlson. I don't remember the last time I went forth in discussion, so I appreciate, it's true, it's true, I appreciate hearing my colleagues' points. I just first have to start off by thanking Councilman Beckius for introducing this ordinance, as well as suggesting that this is something that we need to continue to monitor. I also have to note that, you know, Councilman Shob has been a tremendous advocate for finding a solution to dangerous driving for as long as I've been on city council, so I appreciate the year's worth of effort that Councilman Shob has put in to figuring out a solution, right? And that's really what we're doing and consistently doing, right? Crafting policy, it doesn't end here. This is a beginning point to pinpoint the best solution at addressing the problem of dangerous driving in our community. Public safety is without a doubt the primary responsibility of government, especially when it relates to municipal governments, and so because of that, I'm going to be voting for this ordinance because I believe that this is a responsible way in prioritizing the safety and well-being of the residents of Lincoln. I also think, though, that we play an important role in this. I think crafting public policy takes time, right? We have to determine as a city what our objectives are. Our objective is clear. It is to prevent individuals driving in a dangerous manner that poses a risk to someone's safety. The issue now is evaluating the incomes that we will see as a result of this ordinance, and that's why I believe that after our public hearing, it is clear that we have to continue to monitor the results. Again, I appreciate Councilman Beckius's point about receiving this data within a year and evaluating where we are at. I also have to thank all of the members of LPD, all of the constituents, all of the members of the community who really played a hand in crafting this policy. I also want to point out that I trust Chief Morrow as the police chief, that her officers and our officers as the city of Lincoln will be exercising their discretion in a responsible manner, and I look forward to voting for this ordinance.
Councilman Bowers?
Six people have died, and hundreds more have been injured, and nearly every day I hear from residents who are afraid to drive, bike, or walk along our streets. This has been one of the top concerns I've heard from residents, not just in passing, but urgently and consistently. Dangerous driving on our streets, especially along O Street, has made people feel unsafe in their own neighborhoods. I held a town hall meeting at the Joe Yo about this, and my town halls usually draw about a dozen, maybe two dozen people, but this time the theater was full, which tells you just how deeply this issue is affecting our community. Since 2019, we've had over 700 nighttime crashes and over 800 injury crashes related to this behavior. These are not just statistics, they're people, families, friends, and loved ones. I tend to approach enforcement-focused policies with caution, especially when the underlying issues stem from hardships or health-related struggles like poverty or addiction. I believe in thoughtful, proportionate responses that reflect the complexity of the situation. Dangerous driving, however, isn't about addiction. It isn't about meeting a basic need. It's about a choice, one that prioritizes thrill over safety and puts other people at risk. That demands a different kind of response. Some concerns were raised during the public hearing about how this could impact low-income families, particularly when kids might take the family car without permission. As a social worker, I absolutely hear and respect that concern. I do want to push back on the idea that this is only happening in low-income communities, or that people driving recklessly are mostly kids or only kids. That narrative is wrong. We've heard a lot of scapegoating of youth, especially stereotypes that paint low-income single parents as unable to control their kids. I reject that image completely. I've seen full-grown adults, adults with jobs, homes, and resources engaging in this behavior. Dangerous driving crosses every demographic line. This is not about poverty, it's about choices. Residents have also told us how this has become a quality-of-life issue. People who live near these hotspots talk about being woken up by night by revving engines and squealing tires. The noise, the disruption, the fear, it's wearing people down. Local businesses have told us that they're losing customers, and that their staff don't feel safe walking into their cars after dark. This is a safety issue, and it's an economic one. This ordinance provides tools that are targeted and reasonable by clarifying what it means by racing and reckless behavior. It's about stopping repeat dangerous behavior that already has cost lives. Some have suggested that this policy might discourage people from engaging in the nightlife of Lincoln, but let's be honest, what actually discourages people from enjoying our city is feeling unsafe. Families, businesses, and everyday residents have told us the opposite, that they're avoiding certain areas because of dangerous driving. This is about restoring confidence that our streets are safe and welcoming for everyone. Driving is a privilege. Choosing to endanger others behind the wheel is not. Education, outreach, and prevention and those efforts will continue alongside this ordinance, but when lives are at stake, we need enforceable tools. Our community's safety matters more than someone's thrill ride. Let's pass this ordinance and make our streets safer for everyone.
This was a tough decision for me, pondered quite a bit, and really appreciated the testimony, too, and the involvement of both sides of the issue, too. But I can't get over the fact that we have a big problem here, too, and this is one way to go about resolving that. I really appreciate what Beckius said, too, about revisiting this a little bit, and revisit is probably the wrong term, but taking a look at the facts and the data as they come in and keep your eye on that, so I'll look forward to that data also. Having said that, we'll go ahead and move forward with voting.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Madam Clerk, if you'd like to move us forward.
Okay. We'll move on to section 8, Resolutions First Readings are Items 8A and 8B. Ordinances First Reading and Related Resolutions are Item 9A. Pending List Date Certain is Items 10A. And Pending List are Items 11A through 11D.
All right. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Is there anyone that'd like to address council?
Hi, my name is Anastasia Fitter. I'm going to waive my address for my personal safety. I would first like to begin by telling the people of Lincoln, happy Trans Day of Visibility. Anyone sitting up here doesn't get to tell you that because they're on purpose working against the community, because I don't know if I'm like the only one who, you know, has a sense of irony, but hearing that public safety is the top priority of governments, particularly municipal governments, is really egregious when we're the ones who are like building 2,000-pound bombs that are being dropped on people. I don't know how that is at all within the realm of caring about public safety when we continue to allow children, adults, disabled folks, and also, you know, trans and queer people that the West erases, right? Like, they're dying actively by our hands, and not only that, the city of Lincoln hasn't done anything to curb any city dollars going towards genocide, right? During this Ramadan, we've seen an escalation of hundreds of people being killed within days, right? 400 people dying, and we have responsibility in that. And instead, what happens is looking at some of the Lincoln websites and seeing that on the Lincoln Manufacturing Council, General Dynamics is now on the advisory board. So, I don't understand what this body is saying when they say that they listen and care about what the public says, because for over a year, more than one person has been coming to public comments, has been coming to city council meetings, has tried to have personal meetings, including with the attorney over yonder, and also, an uncountable plethora of emails that show that these folks do not actually care or take the time to understand how they intimately affect people's lives. We heard a lot of delicious flowery language here today, but ultimately, it is cover. It is gilding. It is gold gilding over the shit that is Lincoln, Nebraska, because we are guilty of, oh, I don't know, not prosecuting a group of a white mob who, I don't know, brutalized a 12-year-old Sudanese boy, couldn't really figure out how to handle that. As far as I know, that's still unresolved, so yeah, real safe city of Lincoln, right? Right. Public safety is the top priority of the municipal government. Honestly, it's one of the most ridiculous things that I've heard coming here. I, I mean, I can believe that the people sitting in front of me are capable of that kind of cognitive dissonance, right? They are, the reason that they are even here is because they can, they can sit here and listen to the hard truth about what they're doing in the city. They can see their community being mistreated by their colleagues, and they do nothing about it, right? Lincoln, not Lincoln, public safety is the top priority? Where is it the top priority? I'm like thinking about how long that weapons manufacturer has been in Lincoln, and how many wars it's been involved with, and how little the people that are in charge, that are sitting here today, actually care, right? They don't, they don't care about, you know, not just the Palestinians, but think of all the places that the United States has gone to war with, and how many of those people are here today, right? How many of those Afghan citizens that were bombed by bombs in Lincoln are now here today, right? How many of those people that we contributed to the shredding of their society are here in your city now, and they're also not safe? We know that they're targeted by the police and the white supremacists that support the police. We also know that the cops have had some serious issues internally with a lot of sexual misconduct, so I don't know how you guys can sit up here and act like they're good folks when they can't even stop harming each other. How is, how does that work? Yes, public safety, public safety, except not for anyone who's, I don't know, not sitting here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward? Come on up. And there's two microphones up here, either side, take your pick, how about it?
Hello, my name is Spencer Farley. I guess, is it appropriate for me to ask a question about the racing ordinance, even though that was on the agenda?
This isn't a question-answer type situation, too, but if you have some testimony or anything you'd like to share, too, you're welcome to speak to your council.
We'd be happy to speak with you afterwards as well.
Alright, thank you. I guess regarding the racing, I think it's really great that you guys are trying to refine the policy around that. My question would be, has there been efforts to look at, say, like, the 85th percentile speed on O Street and see what speeds people are comfortable going, and then maybe trying to adjust the, doing traffic calming measures to adjust people's comfort on the road to reduce their speed, in addition to, I suppose, adjusting people's speed through adjustment of the environment, not just enforcement by police?
Be happy to talk to you afterwards. Wonderful, thank you.
Point of order, Chair, I just want to clarify that if an item is on the agenda, that it is not appropriate to speak on that item during public comment. I know that that may be confusing for some of our first-time testifiers.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think the issue of O Street in general and traffic in general is why I allowed to keep that going, too, but thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm John Rife, 4305 West Hub Hall Drive. On March 19th, the DOT closed westbound interstate at mile marker 395 onto the Northwest 48th exit. With little to no support from the State Patrol, county sheriff, and local law enforcement, hundreds of semi trucks exited and quickly filled the Shoemakers parking lot, all the way to the intersection. After the drivers, after that, the drivers began parking along Northwest 48th, along the on-ramps, the underside of I-80 in the X, and all the way down to the Casey's further down by Old Air Park. The semis blocked multiple lanes and, sorry, I got lost. Once Northwest 48th got to get filled, the semi drivers began parking on West Holdridge on both sides of the street and in the high school parking lots. West Holdridge is primarily a residential street and has roundabouts which caused them to be impassable once the drivers parked in the roundabout areas. This caused also a severe hazard for any emergency vehicles trying to get to and from. Going both ways down Northwest 48th, there was only one lane open, and with the roundabouts blocking, being blocked, and streets being blocked, it was, it had been very difficult or impossible for an emergency vehicle to respond to either medical or fire emergency. My ask is of the city council to coordinate and come up with a strategic plan with the Lincoln Police Department and county sheriffs to, if there's ever such an event again that the interstate is closed, that, sorry, not a good talker, that they are directed down the Northwest 48th to Old Air Park utilizing, utilizing the streets between West Mathis and West Coming, which is industrial area and is largely uninhabited, until the storms have subsided, making sure the streets are safe and easily navigable for both people of the neighborhoods and emergency services. I do have photos of some of the streets and things. I have some video, too, but I'm going to puke the fifth because it may not have been well driven, so. If you'd like to see those, I can show if you'd like, or?
This is the first one. This first one is just of midnight at the I-80 off-ramp going into Northwest 48th of the severe backlog. This is just one of the roundabouts with signs being toppled and their earth and landscapes being torn up. There's roughly tens of, thousands if not tens of thousands of dollars of damage. It's another one of that same intersection. This is the street leading down to that intersection. Another view of that, of that roundabout being completely impassable unless you drive down the wrong way, and you can only go down towards the interstate. By the end of the night, it was impassable to get from Northwest 48th by Northwest High School to O Street. There were so many trucks, they were turning people around at the high school intersection. This is just some of the damage throughout the area. Most of this is in the high school parking lot. That is all.
All right, thank you. Yeah, thanks for coming down, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to address council?
Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening, Councilman. I am here, Tracy Axmit, 7201 Willow. I'm here to let you know that maybe you're already aware that the city, county health department has lowered, tiny little chart there, has lowered our fluoride level to align with the CDC 2015 recommendations, so appreciate that greatly. You can see January, Governor signed the regulation in January, and so city utilities lowered that, and this chart is from city utilities, so that's good news. So now our naturally occurring .4 parts per million fluoride, we're now adding just around .3 parts per million at about $116,000 this year in cost. That's three drops per 55-gallon barrel of fluoride that we're adding. And the other thing I wanted to share with you in this update is that I had asked the county health department to consider adding a note about infants and fluoride. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the Dental Association both require, or both recommend, and you'll see on this other side, those recommendations, both recommend that zero to six months, no fluoride, and up to 12 months, reduced fluoride, no more fluoride if your fluoride is, I think, less than three parts per million, so even with Lincoln's .4, did I say three? It's .3 parts per million. Anyway, so wanted to let you know that even as Dr. Anderson Berry said at the LB 147 hearing, the dose matters, and for our infants, the dose really matters. And so, want to make sure that if we can, that those families aren't having to buy special water for babies, and of course, the city water department has on the annual report, they add a cautionary note for folks besides infants who aren't supposed to have the fluoride, right? So, anyway, wanted to share that good news with you also. Unfortunately, the county health department did not, said it was unnecessary to add that cautionary note for infants in the annual water report, so that won't be in there. But there is a cautionary note, generally speaking, for all people kidney issues, and it refers to infants, not particularly to fluoride. But also wanted to let you know regarding fluoride and all other health matters, sharing with you this information on nutrition related to moms, moms and dads, preconception, nutrition is extremely important, and also biological dentistry information on both of those issues for you to go along. And finally, I guess I'd ask that maybe reconsider this information. I don't know if state law allows it, but consider a vote of the people to see if they do want fluoride added to our water. Again, it's .4 parts per million naturally, we're adding .3 roughly now, and so it's a tiny little amount, and so as this information says, where is the benefit in that, in that risk? A little tiny benefit claimed in that big, big risk of fluoride. So, these are for you, and again, appreciate the city-county health department updating those levels. Thanks again.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Motion, have we adjourned? We have a motion and a second by Beckius to adjourn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.